I wonder if everyone can take their seats, we're gonna go ahead and start in a second. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Plurk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Faig.
Here.
Alderman Malamway.
Here.
Alderman Bergis.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Black. Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and start with State and City Address. As Mayor, this is my fourth State and City Address, and I'm happy to report that the state of our great city is very strong. Bloomington's assets are the envy of certainly most communities. We have the best trained and educated workforce in downstate Illinois. We've got the highest income levels. We've got a great public school system, lowest crime rate, world-class institutions of higher learning, and an award-winning public transit system, an active regional airport, the site of many corporate headquarters, and of course, our strategic location. We're the only one of five central Illinois metro areas that are within an hour of each of the others and within two hours of Chicago. So, we have assets that go on and on. Those are core assets. However, we've had certainly some serious challenges over the last year dealing with our streets and infrastructure and growing the local economy to create more jobs. But, we are meeting them and we're poised to make more progress for the future. It's critical to keep in mind that these challenges and problems did not appear overnight, and they won't be solved overnight. Many citizens have expressed frustration with how slow sometimes things seem to move, especially when it comes to street resurfacing, and I can tell you that nothing ever moves as fast as I'd like. But, when it comes to street resurfacing, there are many issues that are core. We can't pave over streets that we know in five years or four years we're gonna have to replace the sewers on. So, we are making progress, but we have to understand that some of these problems are quite complicated. One of our top priorities, in fact, has been fixing streets and infrastructure. The city completed the street resurfacing from the first $10 million bond program over the last couple of years. That bond, along with dedicated revenue sources, means that we put 22 million-plus dollars into street resurfacing from fiscal 2014 to fiscal 2017. That's about a 300 percent increase from previous years. Now, we're poised to do even more, make more progress as what I call Streets 2.0, a much larger commitment to help fund the repairs. This will be the largest investment in our city's streets ever. The runner-up being the $10 million street resurfacing bond that we passed a few months into me being sworn in as Mayor. There's also been great progress in developing our capital improvement master plans for other long-term needs such as water supply and sewers and our 911 emergency response services. And let's be clear, our response times must be improved. They're literally life and death issues for our citizens. The city's also been moving ahead with other long-term projects such as the Hamilton Road Extension, and that promises to be a major improvement in transportation for our community. You'll be able to go from Corporate South in State Farm on a four-lane highway to an interstate without ever going on Veterans Parkway. And there are lots of important economic development possibilities associated with that and transportation movement. As for our city's finances, unlike other levels of government in other cities, our financial situation is very strong. We truly have become a model for other communities or cities or governments to follow. We've got the second-highest bond rating possible. Imagine if the state of Illinois followed Bloomington's example. Where we might be today? In Bloomington, we always have balanced budgets and continue to strengthen our reserves. So, just because we allocate a certain amount of money doesn't mean that that's what we spent. We almost always have money, sometimes it was last year, a few million dollars to return back to our reserves, to return back to our savings for our so-called rainy day fund. And we've done this while making streets and infrastructure and funding our police and fire pensions a top priority. And by "we," I mean obviously myself and the council, the elected representatives. We are moving forward. We've received an award, in fact, for our bold and fiscally responsible policies and actions on our public safety pensions. Unlike most other governments, we are not kicking this down to future generations to fund. We've also pursued and analyzed most of the budget task force's recommendations for possible future savings. Let's keep in mind also that we are delivering the same services to several thousand more citizens than we were seven to 10 years ago, and we're doing it with 100 fewer employees. In 2009, we had approximately 850 full-time equivalent employees. Today, we have approximately 750. We are doing more with less, and we're still moving our city forward. In growing the local economy and job creation, we've had some major successes this year. Most recently, of course, was Rivian moving into the Mitsubishi plant. We've now had a full year of impact of Hy-Vee in Lakewood Plaza, a formerly almost totally abandoned strip mall. We created a Tiff district in the old Colonial Plaza, and now we have Dick's Sporting Goods, Home Goods, and other stores in the New Empire Crossing. That used to really be something that bugged me, not just as a citizen but as Mayor. I get off the airport, in our beautiful airport, Carl, and I'm driving in, it says "Welcome to Bloomington," and there's an abandoned strip mall. Right? That's not the case anymore. It's an engine of economic growth, it's a source of jobs, and it's something that we can be proud of moving forward. You can see if you've driven down Washington Street, the green top Bloomington Cycle Fitness and Gingerbread House project is really taking shape along Constitution Trail. That's the first multimillion-dollar project, multimillion-dollar private investment in Bloomington on Constitution Trail, and we hope to have even more of those moving forward. We've also now experienced a full year of remaking of our movie theaters, the IMAX at Galaxy, and the $6 million retrofitting of the Palace into Ovation. Again, a very exciting new business model. In the age of Hulu and Netflix, many theaters are not doing so well. We've also seen that we now have the $25 million Kroger Superstore, the first in the state of Illinois, and it's coming right here to Bloomington. And that construction will begin next year, and as I understand, will be opening, it's been delayed a little bit, but in 2018. In downtown, which is of course our cultural historic core, we had the first full year of the impact of the Route 66 Visitors Center in the McLean County Museum of History. We must continue to take full advantage of all of our assets, and that includes our historic downtown and Route 66. Since we've closed the funding gap in that proposal, and that was a couple of years ago, that is for the Route 66 Visitors Center, we've had a dramatic increase in serious investment in downtown, and particularly in a catalyst project that both our downtown revitalization plan calls for and our community revitalization plan calls for. And that, as we've seen in Normal, that happened to be a hotel conference center. That happened also in terms of the private interest, be the types of anchors or catalyst projects that private investors were interested in. They were particularly interested next to the Coliseum. There could be all kinds of synergies there. If the Coliseum gets more gigs, then there's less red ink for us to subsidize. There's also more reason for people to come downtown. And so, all along, this project had to fund itself. It had to pay for itself. Right now, we're getting no hotel motel taxes on that site. Even the homeless people don't live in the front and center building. Right? And so, if we were to rebate future revenues, that's no skin off our back right now. There's not a dime in the budget that the city manager and I have talked about that's coming up that is dedicated to a downtown catalyst project. It has to pay for itself. Now, some communities do provide upfront money. We've tried to be much more responsible and fiscally conservative. And frankly, given all the assets that we have, I don't see that there's any reason why we necessarily have to provide incentives that are way too sweet. Now, we've also moved forward. In this past year, we've had a full year of the Administrative Court. In fact, the council got a taste of that the other day when we came in to have our impromptu liquor commission meeting, which was only gonna last a couple of minutes. We saw our, in full court press, Administrative Court, the first full calendar year, and what that means is that we can more effectively enforce our building codes, protect public safety, and protect our historic parts of Bloomington and the neighborhoods from deteriorating. In government transparency, over the last year, we've built upon our previous progress. The Illinois Policy Institute gave us an F four years ago, a 50.7. Today, I'm pleased to report that we got an A+, a 100 percent from Illinois Policy Institute. The organization has also given us now two awards for improved openness and transparency. Now, since the first class of Citizens Academy, Bloomington 101, started in 2014, we have to date graduated a total of five classes of participants. Further, the mayoral open houses have continued to be bi-weekly opportunities for direct democracy, direct citizen involvement, and problem-solving in real time. At this point, we've had, people can come in, of course, and ask questions, get answers, have problems solved if possible, you know, immediately and on the spot if we can do that. In the pursuit of open government, I don't think there's any question, Bloomington continues to be a model for other cities to follow. And our exciting progress has not gone unnoticed. Many national organizations, even in the last year, have given us national awards. And I'm particularly proud of the fact that when Google went through in 2015 and identified the technological capitals of the 50 states, not necessarily the political capitals, they named Bloomington as the digital capital of Illinois. But, since then, we've got many other accolades, mostly for livability and affordability. And this is, and I thank the Economic Development Council and Nora Dukowitz for compiling this list of half a dozen or so. Bloomington was ranked number three of the top 25 college towns in America in 2016 by USA Today. Bloomington is ranked number 10 in the 2016 Best Affordable Places to Live for Families in America by livability.com. Bloomington is ranked number four in the Best City to Live for University Graduates in 2016 by Value Penguin. Similarly, Bloomington is ranked number 15 for Best Cities for New College Grad nationally in 2016 by Zumper. The Bloomington Normal Metro area is ranked among the top 50 best places for STEM grads in 2016 by nerdwallet.com. They've ranked us high in some other things, too. They seem to think that we are the center of the known universe, and they're very smart people. The Huffington Post in 2016 ranked Bloomington Normal as one of, quote, "the 11 best cities you'd never thought to live in but should," unquote. So, while we continue to have important challenges ahead such as funding capital projects and, frankly, working with Eastland Mall to protect jobs and private investment, there are many exciting opportunities for us to continue the progress that we've made for the future. We are on the right track, and we are moving forward. I'm totally confident that we can and that we will come together to continue to make Bloomington a model city, a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much. I'm gonna shift now to public comment, and we have more than the 30 minutes that is allocated, so we would ask you to not, if possible, this is optional, but we're asking this, if you would not go to your 30-minute limit so that we can hear all the people who have signed in for public comment this evening. And let me also start by reminding everyone, if you do want to get actual answers to problems or you want to engage in a public dialogue and get discussion, you can come to the Bloomington Open House, the Mayor's Open House, on Friday before a Monday city council meeting. It's from 4:30 to 5:30. You can come in and talk about anything. So, at this point, we're beginning public comment. At exactly 7:15, we will end public comment at 7:45 at the latest, and I'm gonna call several names in a row. Dennis Arnold, Marty Seigel, and Tim Cook. Dennis, if you'd come forward. And again, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. I have a different perspective of the substation that I'd like to talk about. I laughed during the last council meeting over your discussion that the area needs to be surveyed. Ready or not, every Saturday morning, from March to November, my neighbors and I can expect the knock at the door. Is it a Jehovah's Witness again, or just another deregulated utility or media salesperson? Then in 2007, it began. Survey takers, city of Bloomington, McLean County, WBRP, IWU, ISU, MCCA, just to name a few, any or all daylight hours of the week. It crescendoed through 2016. I began looking back to the good old days when, old days of weekend relaxation or yard work interrupted occasionally by the friendly witness or a misinformed desperate salesperson. Since last spring, Gridley Allen Cricket and Old Town Neighborhood Association has discussed and urged BPD in meetings with and without BPD representatives to use the facility offered by MCCA. Discussions that included near and next-door neighbors of the proposed facility. Most disturbing are some public comments concerning the substation, aka the Community House, proposed on Jefferson Street, less than five blocks from my home of 37 years, a short five-minute walk, if you know your way around the area. What I'd like to know from those who have protested the most is, when did our area become so exclusive? Others speak glowingly of and about diversity, multiculturalism. We live it. For over three decades, we are the area of which you speak in Bloomington. Why would you forbid personal and honest interaction with your employees, the police department that is proposed to use this facility? Whether you like it or not, rent or own, you pay their salary and retirement through property tax, sales tax, and the many city fees that skim cash from your media and utility billing. A few blocks from 828 are facilities that provide shelter for McLean County's homeless, alternative education, and parolee housing. Within our neighborhood are several assisted living group homes plus Chestnut Health Services as well as the rental housing community, as well as the rental housing community health services retains for most of McLean County's numerous mental health outpatients. With so many sheep packed into such a small area of Bloomington, it is inevitable that white-collar, blue-collar, and no-collar wolves continually arrive to ply their trade, their illicit trade. I for one welcome the opportunity and friendly scrutiny this home could furnish both employer and employee, hopefully preventing a return to the disastrous 1990s and early 2000s when until arrested a BPD officer protected and sponsored prostitution, and a police chief who, without any reservations, announced his perfect solution for Bloomington Normal by designating my neighborhood as a safe haven for retail drug outlets, thus securing anonymity and safety for their wealthy, tested customers. For so many reasons, you as our representatives need to provide your employees and neighbors this Community House.
Okay, thank you. Next is Marty Seigel, Tim Cook, and Cecilia Tuchart. Good morning.
Good evening. You're probably tired of hearing about the widening of Linden Street. Some of you probably think neighbors are wasting staff time and council time on this. But, why has staff, the question is, why has staff devoted so much time, effort to fostering then protecting an illogical and expensive plan? Why did staff push to widen the only section of Linden that is not congested? Why did staff hold a meeting with the neighbors in June, tell neighbors that parking could be eliminated and the street could remain the same width, then change its mind? Why did staff then change the manner of counting citizen input, eliminating all but property owners along the stretch of street in question, then recount citizen input? Why was the owner of five properties counted as one, as five people? Why was the owner of five properties counted as five people? Is this the way we should be analyzing traffic patterns in Bloomington? This is really about staff creating extra street space to provide a marked parking lane for additional business development in Linden, on Linden. If the city provides marked street parking, developers can put more on the lot than they could if the businesses have to provide parking. It's especially unfair that the staff intends to take land from the neighborhood parkway in order to accommodate excessive expansion. The neighborhood will certainly be scalped of more trees since there will be more paved land. Runoff from businesses will certainly create more flooding in the neighborhood basements. Parking has been allowed on the west side of Linden for years, but only customers of the bakery supply store have parked on the street. Why can't the city now work with that business, which has definitely been an asset to the neighborhood for decades, to provide parking in the backyard? They don't have the parking right now. But this plan, this was many years ago, but this plan is not intended to help small businesses. It's designed to give more neighborhood land to businesses that already received zoning concessions to create ISOs along Linden and along the Constitution Trail. Their activities have awakened neighborhoods and neighbors in the night, and the loss of green space has caused flooding in the Old East Side. Why should the city now encourage further expansion of warehouse businesses along the trail and into our neighborhoods? This plan flies in the face of all the talk about complete streets, bring it on Bloomington, and the promise to make our infrastructure, make our infrastructure support new development. We have not seen, we have much more to say about that. This is a very bad precedent. If neighborhood concerns are dismissed in this case, why won't other central city neighborhoods see their quality of life bargained away behind the scenes as well?
Thank you. Next, Tim, I think, is it Cook?
Cook, you got it.
And then Cecilia Tuchart, and then Aaron Len.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about an issue with the community losing the Community Field Soccer Complex out on Ireland Grove Road at the end of 2017. And specifically to talk about me as a father of two kids, 11, seven, who are both with me here today, and a place for them to have those recreational needs filled right now. Just looking for the city council to take up the discussion on that matter and have the discussion about what we can do going forward, 2018 and beyond. I think that there are a large number of families, I think upwards of 4,000 families in our community, you know, that have soccer-playing children, and that's a very large number that would not have a place to play in 2018 and will likely go elsewhere to find those needs or maybe, you know, from that standpoint, find other ways to fill their time. So, you know, from our standpoint, from my standpoint looking, and I've coached for six years and also watched my kids for the past six, seven years, having a centralized place where families can go is very important. When you disperse throughout the community, you end up either having to split up when you have multiple kids playing, which many families do, and you end up not being able to be there where, right now, with Community Field, you're able to go to one place, see them at one time, in one place. So, from that perspective, a soccer complex within this community could be very economically beneficial as well. My son's Illinois Fusion Club team runs a tournament in May, brings in 150-some teams to the community. That's, you know, roughly probably 4,000 to 5,000 people, and that's just one weekend. You know, with a new facility, there could be more weekends than that and more families and spending their money in hotels and restaurants within the Bloomington Normal area. And that could be economically beneficial to both cities. So, and then the last point is, is I think the needs out there, that's not just soccer. You know, there is a growing lacrosse community and a growing cricket community within the community as well that could benefit from a multi-sport complex within the area. Appreciate you listening, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Cecilia Tuchart, Aaron Len, and Julie Crow.
Hi, members of the city council and people of Bloomington, Illinois. I have lived in Bloomington, Illinois since I moved here in 2001, and today, I wanted just to briefly mention that I have announced my write-in candidacy for the mayoral election this year. It's to be held on April 4th in 2017, and I would like to get the vote out, but before I do that, I would like to take this opportunity, and I hope to not use my three minutes, that I might be able to give that up to somebody in the community that would also like to speak. But that, today I own a corporation, and I own these five US Design patents, and I'd like to get this out of the way so that people know that I am the sole owner of the corporation, and I hold these patents, and you have to pay for these patents, and you have to do the work that is surrounding these patents. So, I've done all the work surrounding them. I do indeed own them. I am the sole owner, and I am in a partnership with the United States Patent and Trademark Office that I educate the students in the schools about innovation. And I'm looking forward to running for mayor, but I'm also looking forward to being included in any of the mayor festivities for the race, and I'll follow up tomorrow. I have a full press release of my candidacy for tomorrow, but today I did file my paper as a write-in candidate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, next, Aaron Len, Julie Crow, and Donna Boland.
Greetings, Star Children and Milky Wayos. Yeah, so, people are still going on and on about the substation, and it's not that it's a horrible idea in having like a community house or having extra cops down there that's the problem. It's that the process in this whole thing is a little wonky. The group putting it together, there's something that's just not hitting me right about it. But, most importantly, like, that doesn't address what people keep saying more than anything, which is there are gunshots down there. It's what I keep hearing over and over and over again. And what I really think is, is that there needs, y'all should invest into a shot detection system. Seriously should get some kind of shot detection system. I'm sure there's other scientific evidence that you could glean from such a system. I know the websites that I said that saw on the interweb there said that you could get more, more better evidence for the police, like actual shell casings. You would know where the crime actually happened or it's the closest vicinity to it. But yeah, but having a house full of cops, whether they're armed or not armed, in such a tense point in time in this country is a little, it's a little weird. It's a little weird, a little Orwellian, to say the least. I know it sounds good in, you know, theory, but they've gotta repair their relationship with the people. Like, it's been seriously strained through a lot of different people. I've said my two bits here many times about this subject, but you know, there's something needs to happen with a better, I don't even wanna say conversation. I really do think that we need a civilian review board, and that's my I really do think that we need a civilian review board, and that's my two bits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julie Crow, Donna Boland, and Scott Steimerling.
So my issue is the implementation of the city's plan downtown Bloomington on the weekends to move the vehicle for hires from Main Street to Center Street. I do support the city's plan, but I believe they made one important oversight in putting the 12 to 22 passenger vehicle for hires, which would be vans and short buses, in with the 80-passenger buses on Center. This will ensure the ruin of those businesses. And you could implement the city's plan as is with one little addition, and that is a third hub for this class of vehicles, the 12 to 22s, and it's a perfect location on East Mulberry, just east of Main Street, so right there where Drifters and American Pub is. The vehicle for hires could enter that hub area from East Street. You could put it close to Main, so the, the crowd can still see them, identify the, the vehicle that they normally take. They will not be removed from where their customers are, where the crowd is seeking vehicles, and you will ensure the success, or their survival really, because they will not survive on Main, I mean, on Center Street. Come the end of the semester, their income pretty much dries up during the summer. So by moving them now, the public is not even trained to that, that, that area yet. They're, they're not going to know to even go there. So between, this is only a short period of time, that their, their business will, will be so damaged, their income will be so depleted, that come summer, they will have no reserves to get them through the summer. You have the signs already. You've got to remove them from Main Street and repost the new ones, use those signs, and just give a small section of that public parking area that is on that block of Mulberry to this, these 12 to 22 passenger vehicles. And don't lump them in with these full-size long buses that are 80 passengers and more. You do nothing to curb the, really very little, I don't know what the police do, but the, the legal vehicle for hires just run rampant. Now you're giving them Main Street with the Ubers and the taxis. This is crazy to me. You are disadvantaging the lawfully tax-paying businesses and advantaging illegal student DDs, which Michael Collins was in one of those when he was killed. So this is my comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Boland, Scott Steimerling, and Bruce Meeks.
I'm Donna Boland, I live in Ward Two, and I'm here to talk about the library proposal. I totally believe that is for the common good, and I have volunteered in various positions there for decades. But it's my understanding the library is not a city department, and it should not be part of the CIP. It has its own Board of Directors and is a separate taxing body on the property tax bill. The library property tax rate was just increased two weeks ago, and with the 3.2 million secured funds and the request for 16 million to 21 million, will end up being hidden in the general funds of the city if it goes forward as is. The city already has purchased land for the expansion, and the city loaned the library a million dollars back in 2006, and I'm not sure it was ever repaid. The stats from 10 years ago show an increase, but that is basically because of the expansion in 2006. The November 2000, November 2016 manager's report shows a flat use and a slight decrease over the last four years. And the November 2016 stats from the, the library says that there's 34,000 people that use the computers, and it's not clear as to whether that's per month or for the entire year. Seems that's like half the population, and I can't believe that's for a month. The door count is the same as in 2009, only a 4% increase overall. The circulation is the same as in 2011, and yet they're requesting double the size of the building. The program attendance is 28% increase, and yet again, they're requesting the building to be 100% increase. There's conflicting numbers, only 1,300 people. Forget that. I can't figure out my notes. The library standard says that 322,000 units or items on the shelf. We currently have 318,000, so that's only 4,000 more, and I don't understand, again, why the library needs to be doubled in size. The plan shows several multi-use, non-library buildings in addition, so I don't know who is paying for that. And as far as the statistics for the city, the population growth has, cannot be predicted. The water pumpage from the 2016 has declined, which indicates a decrease in the population. The metro, the metro population-
I'm going to have to ask you to finish.
Okay. Um, I feel that the, I feel that the library needs to be put down on the priority list, and public health and safety needs to be at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Steimerling, Bruce Meeks, and Lee Yutzi.
Scott Steimerling, I'm one, I'm Ward Five. I feel that city administration does need to be open from eight to five and stagger their lunches and not be closed between noon and one, and some days they're closed all day. You know, there have been times I've come down and city administration's closed. And, you know, that, you know, we don't close the water, water collections, we don't close legal, we don't close a lot of departments, but city administration, why can't they be on the same level that everybody else is? Set the example. I guess the, you know, it concerns me that, you know, the city does not take, take it seriously that, you know, they let Mr. Hales, you know, set the rules. And, you know, I've suggested that the city administration, the door, if, if the, I've been told that the secretaries do not feel safe in city administration. If that is the case, then take the door and cut the lousy thing in half and leave the top half open, so that they are there to be a service to the public. They better, you know, I guess my, my concern is, you know, the city administration is closed sometimes all day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bruce Meeks, Lee Yutzi, and Elton Franklin.
Good evening to you nine legislators that were elected. Ward Four, you were elected with 684 votes. Ward Five, you were elected with 620 votes. Ward One, you were elected with 615 votes. Ward Eight, you were elected with 452 votes. Ward Seven, 447 votes. Ward Five, 320 votes. Ward Two, 270. Prior to that, 195. Ward Six, 184. That's your political capital? That's what you're using to say that you're representing the citizens? We don't have a model city. We have lower voter turnout. That's the award we need. We don't need an award for website transparency that does not address the open data set. For three years, I've given you nine legislators the opportunity to make a motion at the committee as a whole and say, "We want to put this on the agenda." But it's so convenient, isn't it? "Oh, they, I can't get five people, I can't get three people." Nice way to get around being legislators. Just because it says the mayor and the city manager, who I asked tonight to put this on the city agenda, and I got a good chuckle out of him. And I told him, I didn't think he wanted it at all. And neither does this mayor. You want a model city? You need to look at the ordinance. You need to quit listening to somebody who wasn't voted into office to represent the citizens and sit here and vote every time. He only votes at a tiebreaker. You're supposed to represent all the cities, all the citizens. This is about the data that the citizens own, that for decades has been held back, given out, parceled out, as needed to get certain situations through, before this mayor goes back to Walt Bittner, and I'm tired of it. I gave you a solution. I walked in here in 2014, 10 times I've asked to be on the agenda. So who's disenfranchising who here? You do not want to hear from the citizens. You do not want to take citizen input unless it works for your ideology. How about you take your ideology and stick it outside this building? And you work for the citizens, even though you only have 184 that voted for you, or 684 voted for you twice and once in a runoff. You need more voters to vote for you to move this city forward. You need voters involved, you need citizens involved. It can happen. How about we try to be that kind of model city, instead of one that's directly toward one ideology only?
Lee Yutzi, Elton Franklin, and Gary Lambert.
I take my hat off, but my hair is a mess. No disrespect. I'm here to talk about the, the moving of the vehicle for hire to Center Street. Writing is on the wall there, but I just want to make this clear, that the plan they have, putting buses over there and expecting that there's going to be an officer there in a car to divert the people coming in at exceedingly fast speeds to avoid killing ISU students, maybe me, it's cockamamie, okay? It's half-cooked, sorry. And that, you say, "Well, I'm losing money," so I would say that it's half-cooked. What Julie said about, you know, empowering the illegal DDs, very true. You know, when we had the meeting, Assistant Chief Ken Bay said, "Well, you know, the Ubers, they, you know, rate gouged, people aren't going to want to pay $30 to go home." Like, that's right, they're going to use the illegal DDs. At this point, anybody in here can go downtown in a car, and the police have no idea who they are, they don't have signs. Anybody, Michael Collins happened right in front of me. Boom, cloud of smoke, debris, I went over there, I had the flashlights on, and that was an illegal DD, okay? If the insurance would have found out about that, you know, there would have been some more lives ruined. And I'm just going to leave you with this. Very unsafe, but I want to, you know, Mr. Marion, I don't see eye to eye, I like you as a person, we don't see eye to eye, and I don't believe in the talk about transparency. I have a Freedom of Information Act request, 3:19, 2016, 9:19 PM, regarding vehicle for hire from Assistant Chief Clay Wheeler to Sergeant Richard Bielletto. The chief and I have been trying to get some support for some plan to lessen the number of vehicles downtown, okay? That's not how our police work. The, the ordinance was for nuisance abatement, public safety, not because you're looking for a plan to lessen us. That's what free market does, okay? So, you know, I said it before, you know, you guys wanted private companies to manage your golf courses. If it works for vehicle for hire, put them in charge of your golf courses too, because it makes about as much sense, you know? So anyway, that's all I have to say about it. I promised I wouldn't froth at the mouth tonight, I think I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Elton Franklin and Gary Lambert.
My name is Elton Franklin, I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. Heard a lot of interesting things tonight, I was particularly amused by the state of the city. Apparently you haven't been talking to the people. There's a lot of polls going on, there's a lot of other foo-fa, but me, I'm in the trenches, I, I, I actually interact with the folks on a daily basis, and probably more than most, because I'm a talkative little booger, you think it's easy to get me going, it's hard to make me shut up. But simple point in fact is, we've been talking about priorities. It's been over 10 years now that I've been coming here with a better record of attendance than most of the folks here. Simple point in fact is, you can talk all day long about priorities until you start taking action, until you start doing what needs to be done, you are pretty much farting in the wind. And really what it boils down to is, are you going to give the chief what he needs to bring down those times, those response times that I, I'll wholeheartedly jump on that bandwagon, they need to come down, that is a matter of life and death. A library, excuse me, that has been showing decline in usage and attendance, no matter what the talk may be, I mean, the numbers don't lie. We've got an opportunity to have a, a post, if you will, not so much a post, I looked at it as kind of a, a sort of a conversation, as a starting place for the police to have their little substation, or however you want to classify it, for the folks to come in, sit down, and talk to the people behind those badges, and let the people behind those badges talk with them as well. Not talk to them, not talk at them, but talk with them, to actually have honest, forward, friendly discussions about what we can do to make things better, to make things safer. Folks' priorities is something that has yet to be addressed in the 10 years, over 10 years that I've been coming here. I hope at some point in the next 10, that it will actually see some action occur. Thank you.
Gary Lambert.
See, we're running over, so I'll try to be quick. I too like Elton, and pleased to hear the condition of the city, particularly its financial condition. But seriously, I sat here probably for four months as we've been going through these capital forecasts for all the different departments, and I think without exception, each of those called for additional staff. Expenditures over the next five years of somewhere between 300 and 400 million dollars. I'd like to say that we're not going to see any fee increases or tax increases. I don't think that's going to happen. I think after the election, the city is going to see a snowball of increases because you can't fund it otherwise. Money has to come from somewhere. So, I would reiterate what several have mentioned about the library. Last three years, circulation is down. Doesn't need to be dwelled on. I'd close with a couple of quotations. Some of you may know a gentleman by the name of Thomas Sowell, he's an author, commentator. "Since this is an era when many people are concerned about fairness and social justice, what is your fair share of what someone else has worked for?" Another one. "I have never understood why it is greed to want to keep the money you have earned, but it is not greed to want to take somebody else's money." Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, do you mind if I make a couple comments? I'll keep them in proper context.
It's not really in, I mean, what we've been trying to do is not respond to public comment. If you want to do that during automatic comments, Jeff, is that?
Automatic comments.
Automatic comments, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think with automatic comments. Yeah, I mean, because essentially what, you know, when we have, if we, if we open the door to begin to respond, if we, even if we think that people have been unfair or that there's misinformation, that we don't want to get into that situation.
I can wait until then, but it's a two-parter. I don't want to respond to anybody that made the comments-
Okay.
-here, but I also have some comments that I think are appropriate for this setting.
Okay, and so why don't we do that in automatic comments? Okay, so why don't we do that in automatic comments? Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderman-Fruh. Seven, seven F, please. Seven F, okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of seven F?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Halmann. Okay, at this point, go ahead and vote. Obviously, an "I" is...
No, no.
Sorry. There we are. Now it's on. Okay. The motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. If we can return to the, excuse me. There we go. The concern that you might have had on item seven F, Alderman-Fruh.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion that seven F be approved as presented by the staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Halmann.
My only comment here is that as we hear about conversation on the street, as we read about retail in our national publications, et cetera, et cetera, this happens to be property for the benefit of the audience, a property, it's called Mylins Hotel, it's on 604 I.A. Drive, and just a clarification of the ordinance or the approval action we've taken before. But my only comment is that I don't think it's probably appropriate tonight, but I think as a council, I would suggest that we have some discussion about incentives, because all of a sudden, across the street, now we're talking about Eastland Mall, we're talking about Macy's, et cetera, et cetera. And I think the public is wondering, where does this incentive program go? And if you approve it on one side of the street, do you need to approve it on the other side? And that's, you know, what we've heard on an ongoing basis is that we're helping somebody at the expense of somebody else. So I'm not here to make a statement whether I'm for or against any particular one or the policy, but I think it would deserve some council refresh on what this incentive program is about. I think we have a policy in place.
Right.
And so maybe it's time to revisit that, let the public know what that is. Perhaps it's on the website already, but, thank you. But we need some discussion between us, otherwise this thing is just going to go and go and go. So that's my comment.
Right. Thank you very much. Obviously, we're moving into a new, kicking into higher gear with economic development, and I think you're absolutely correct. That was a policy document that was written about a half-decade ago with, most of the members of the council weren't there, different mayor, and so this is a new time, a new era. So, thank you. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, if there's a motion and a second, you'd vote, this is on item seven F. Okay, the motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we will now move to our regular agenda, consideration of an ordinance approving a lease and intergovernmental agreement with Bloomington Normal Airport Authority. And we are going to start with a very brief presentation by our city manager, about five minutes, and then a brief council discussion. Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. First off, I just want to recognize that we do have in our audience not only David Cooley, Chairman of the Airport Authority, but also Carl Olson, Executive Director of the Central Illinois Regional Airport Authority. We appreciate them being here tonight. Tonight, we're asking the City Council to consider and approve an ordinance that would basically ratify or to approve a intergovernmental agreement and lease agreement between the city of Bloomington and our local Central Illinois Regional Airport. Previously, you've been presented with some extensive information on these agreements. Basically, the city has been in negotiations with the Airport Authority and its representatives for probably a little over a year or longer, trying to replace a very old 1995 agreement that only pertained to so-called Fire Station Three, the one located on East Empire. With the completion of the new Fire Station Number Six out there on the east side of the airport, it was necessary to recognize the fact that that is the now formerly identified airport and to house the airport rescue and firefighting equipment, but also that's where we have a full-time firefighter there to staff that, that particular apparatus on a 24/7 period. We've been very fortunate that during this past year, working with our partners at the airport, we've had extensive discussion of how we can not only collaborate on providing not only the minimum firefighting personnel needed, which would be these three full-time, but how can we further recognize the expanded and the very much enhanced public safety, not only personnel and equipment. As you might recall, it's very unusual to find an airport that can boast of, or to use in their marketing, that they have not just one airport with its associated firefighting personnel and equipment to serve their emergency response needs, but in our case, they have two. And what this intergovernmental agreement, lease agreement calls for is that we're recognizing and will continue to use, first, not only Fire Station Six, but Fire Station Three will continue to be a fully operational airport, which will have access to the airfields that can enhance the amount of personnel and equipment that can, in a moment's notice, be able to provide very extensive emergency response services to the airport. Granted, both stations do provide for and enhance our ability to serve both the commercial center of the east side along veterans, but also it helps provide for additional services to go out east to include the Grove Development. Nevertheless, we do have some existing needs to continue to look at, the northeast quadrant of the city. And that, as Mayor, you mentioned in your State of the City address, we have some significant fire and emergency response times that we'd need to see come down in serving that northeast quadrant. In order to kind of compensate and to deal with these extended and enhanced services to the city, not only will there be no cash exchange, but we'll commit to continue to provide engine companies and others to assist with emergency response time. We're looking at making substantial remodeling and improvements to Fire Station Three, which are greatly needed. We'll also be looking at how we can continue to enhance these emergency response needs on the east side. Furthermore, there is one other piece of property that is included in this agreement, and that is a small east side satellite facility that could be used to serve as a staging point for salt storage, to be used for plows and others to serve the east side of the city, and other parks, recreational and other city service needs, including the water department. So this is kind of an added benefit. While it will not replace a future operations facility, it is something that is very much needed to provide for the expanding city on the east side. Like I say, it's, there's been some significant discussion with you in pass on all the details of both agreements. The term of this agreement is for 30 years with an extension for an additional 10. We have, in addition to several representatives here, we also have Fire Chief Brian Moore, who has been very much involved in these negotiations. We appreciate his help, together with Lisa Petrelli, Zorley Northrup, and others as well in the city. So with that, I'd like to turn the time back to Mayor, you and the council with the recommendation for your approval and a motion to approve these ordinances and subsequent agreements. But again, we have staff here to answer any other questions you might have on these agreements here tonight.
Actually, I will go ahead and start, see if there is a motion to approve, and then we'll begin discussion. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'd like to make that motion, sir.
Okay, moved by Alderman-Har, and second by Alderman-Lamboy. All right, discussion. Alderman-Lamboy.
Okay, sure. I just want to take just a couple of minutes just to say thank you to Carl Olson, but also Brian, you know, for your leadership on this issue. I know it took, you know, quite a bit of time to put together, but I also want to recognize the creativity that the staff engaged in in terms of, you know, putting together a deal that brings to the fore a facility, you know, a, what's the word that we use? The satellite facility. And to allow not only Public Works, but also, I understand, Parks and Rec as well, to be able to use that, right? Okay, yeah. So I think that's a fantastic job, you know, so thank you to all of you for the hard work that you put into this.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'd also like to thank the Airport Authority. Those are volunteers as well, and they put a lot of hard work and effort into their job as well as Carl Olson. So I am enthused that we are keeping number three available as an airfield rescue unit, and the doors will be operational, they will be able to respond quickly out the backside. And that's something that I had asked for. And so that's not something that we have to do, but something that most folks don't really realize is that we do have a very, very advanced airport. We have very advanced approaches, we have advanced facilities that most Central Illinois airports do not have. And so we are a reliever, and we can be a, an alternate of last resource, and for that reason, number three is important. And it is important that they are able to respond if something would happen. So we do have limited pavement available to very, very large aircraft, but we do have enough that we could allow for an arrival of a disabled-type aircraft or something that may not have necessarily been scheduled to arrive, and we've done that in the past. And highly professional fire department and paramedics that have their thumb on exactly what's going on. So I'm very proud of our department, I'm very part of our airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay? At this point then, the, and I would be in favor of the motion, the ordinance is intergovernmental agreement. The motion carries seven to nothing. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, excuse me. At this point, we move on to item eight B, and that's consideration of approving a fiscal year 18 CDBG Partner Project. Whoops. And that is, for the audience, it's Community Development Block Grant Partnership. And we have a presentation, 10 minutes, by Jennifer Tony, and then the council discussion. Jennifer?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an overview of what we're planning on putting in the action plan that will be presented at a later date for final approval. To give you a little background, for the Partner Project program, these are all basically programs that our Department of Community Development can't complete on our own. So we typically will look at public services, we don't have the staff or the knowledge to provide those ourselves, public facility projects, and then some non-homeowner housing projects are all invited to apply for this program. So for this year, we made the Partner Project applications available to the public around June 15th. We promoted that, they were available through direct mailing, emails, through the pathogram, and we did a press release that was printed in both the Panograph and then reported on several other media outlets. Then we accepted applications for a 60-day time period. Through that, we received these 20 applications, which resulted in a request of approximately $1 million in funding. We don't have nearly that much money, so then we had to start doing some reviewing and determining what we could fund. So we divided things into kind of three tiers. Tier one being projects that we would definitely like to fund with our FY18 allocation. We don't know how much money that'll be yet, it won't be released until next month, so all of this is kind of a guess, but we feel like we're pretty close. Tier two are projects that are definitely viable projects, that we would maybe fund if we have enough carry-forward funding or additional allocation above what we're anticipating. And then tier three are projects that we're not recommending for funding at this time. A lot of the programs in tier one are continuation projects, so I'm going to make an assumption since, and to honor our time commitment, that you're somewhat aware of what those projects are since you've approved funding for them in the past. So under tier one, the first four projects are all continuation projects, so unless there's questions, I'm not really going to discuss those at this time. Catalyst Ministries is a new program for us for this year, and it's, Catalyst Ministries is a not-for-profit organization that provides housing and services for women that are exiting either a sexual abuse situation or sexual exploitation. So they have a transitional house for women that they are going to be opening, a lot of these are single mothers, and they've requested funding to help rehab the house. So we're requesting that we put in, or we're anticipating putting $25,000 in to help rehab the basement of that home so that they can add in extra bedroom units and they could house more women with that, with those funds. Transitional housing and the need for supportive services is identified in both our consolidated plan for the CDBG, the comprehensive plan, and then also the League of Women Voters Housing Study. The Bloomington Housing Authority, Section Three Training, this is a continuation project. We will ask for this funding every single year because it helps both Bloomington Housing Authority and the city meet a requirement of receiving federal funding. So it's a good partnership to meet that. The next three projects are all Bloomington, West Bloomington Revitalization Project programs, and I'd love to be able to fund them all in just one program, it would be so much easier, but unfortunately, because different components of each program meet a different national objective, I fund them in three different programs. The Tool Library is just that, it's tools for the Tool Library, which provides tools at no cost for home repairs. The Public Service Project is a continuation project, but there is an additional component in this for which I'm requesting approval to put some additional funding in there. The Tool Library has reached a point where it's going to be difficult for them to manage much longer with volunteer staff, which is typically, they're all volunteers. So WBRP did request funding for a part-time Tool Library Coordinator, and I think that that's probably a really good use of our funding, it'll help that program grow and really help the residents of West Bloomington and then really all of Bloomington to be able to utilize that service more efficiently. It'll help increase the hours that they can be open, so they're more available to the public. The other thing with the facade program, part of that money is for materials, which we have funded in the past, and that provides some minor, funds for minor exterior repairs. But they are also requesting funding for a stipend, if you want to call it, for a project coordinator for construction management, and so we were requesting funds for that also. The Woodbury Park is the final project in tier, it's actually in both tier one and tier two. Woodbury Park is part of an agreement that the city entered into with Turnquist Family Foundation in 2004, and with the creation of that subdivision, we agreed to put in a park, which still isn't there. So we felt that it was probably time to go ahead and dedicate the funds to get that park finished. And so $40,000 of regular allocation, I'm sure we're going to have carry-forward funding, so we would put $35,000 of carry-forward funding, which is tier two. And then Parks and Rec has budgeted $25,000, so altogether we'd have $100,000 to finish that park. So that's tier one. I've already addressed in tier two, Woodbury. The Heartland Head Start has requested funding for a new HVAC system. It's definitely needed, I've been out there and looked at what they have, and so it's definitely a project that is needed to be completed, but because we gave them funding for... a, a project that is needed to be completed, but because we gave them funding for a park for this current year, we wanted to give others an opportunity to receive some funding, so we put them in tier two. Um, the final project in here is Bloomington Housing Authority requested, um, funds for security cameras for Woodhill Tower, um, the cameras that they have are, um, mostly non-working, those that are working, um, are, don't have any ability to record, um, so they only have viewing capabilities only. Um, again, um, this is, um, I think a worthwhile project, um, we just aren't sure we're gonna have the funding, um, right up front, so we needed to wait and see what our numbers were gonna be before we determined whether we could put it in the action plan or not. Um, real quick then, and I didn't allow myself enough time for tier three, 'cause this is the big one. Um, Prairie State Legal Services requested money for their, um, housing, um, advocacy project, um, this is a project that's currently in existence. Anytime we ref, we find a public service for the very first time, they have to show that it's either a, a new service or that it's, the money is going to represent a quantifiable increase in the amount of service. The grant application didn't meet either one of those tests, I requested follow-up information, and then the information that I got back didn't really show that there was gonna be a quantifiable increase, so we decided not to fund it. Home Sweet Home Mission requested funding for a fire escape, um, unfortunately, this was maintenance on their fire escape, we could, with the funding, provide a new fire escape, but we can't provide maintenance, so this doesn't meet a national objective and we couldn't fund it. Construction Charities asked for money for a, um, a rehab project to make five homes more accessible. We feel that this is a really good project, but I think that there's better ways to fund it probably than with our CDBG money. Um, the Illinois Housing Development Authority has a grant for this type of project, the RFP currently isn't out, so the funding's not available, but we're keeping an eye on that, and if the funding becomes available, then we would consider applying for that at that time. Um, the Crosswinds Church, um, this is a very involved project, um, that was a very big request, it was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which would be almost half of our allocation. Um, we, we considered it, um, but the way HUD does their programming, we are allowed three years to finish a project, and because this project involved the purchase of two separate properties, moving a house from one property to the other property, um, and then filling in the foundation and allowing that time to settle, we really weren't sure we were gonna be able to finish it in the time that was allowed. Um, then on top of that, we had, um, already decided that we probably should fund Woodbury because it's in the parks' plan, this park was not in the parks' plan, so that, Woodbury seemed like a better way to go as far as a park. Catalyst Ministries did, um, request money for public services, a lot of the things that they requested were not, um, an allowable expense, we could've funded part of it, but since we were already funding the rehab project, um, and the public service projects are subject to a fifteen percent cap, um, we were, you know, we didn't really have the money to give them enough money to make, um, a viable, uh, difference. The sewer project is a non-issue at this point, 'cause it's been moved to FY17, so we're gonna try to move some money around and fund it this year, and then Bloomington Housing Authority requested money for some fence removal, and even though it's a necessary project, I really feel that it's probably maintenance and again, not an allowable expense. Yes.
Okay. I feel just, just in case we have questions.
Yes.
Are there, uh, questions? Jennifer?
Not a question, but I just wanna, um, thank you for, uh, referencing other plans that we have in place already and the work that, um, you looked at with the, like, the legal win voters and so forth, so we're not duplicating, um, work and bringing, uh, bringing a variety of different types of organizations together to make us a better community. So, thanks.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, is there a motion to approve the preliminary funding plan for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, uh, for the CDBG program?
So moved.
Moved by Alder Woman Painter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Woman Hellman, further discussion? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
The motion carries seven to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. We move right along to our presentation of the Bloomington Fire Department Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, and then of course after this, we'll have the, the Public Library Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, and let's, just, just to clarify for everybody, um, these are plans, we have not had capital improvement plans in the past, and this is , uh, the last wave of our plans, it doesn't mean that these things are going to be done, necessarily, uh, and we're the closest in that, and, and we would have to prioritize and figure out what i- is next, what would happen. It is, let's say, the, the closest equivalent I could say would be, let's say if you're in a family and say you were a young couple and you had two children and another one on the way, and you had a house, well, you know, you might say, oh, gosh, I guess at some point, when they get a little bigger, we're probably gonna need to have an addition, maybe another bedroom, uh, maybe a, a rec room, well, uh, if you know also that you're gonna have to have, to have a new roof in three to five years, well, you, you budget for the roof, and maybe a new bedroom, and if you can get the money, you put in the rec room, if you can't get the money, you don't put in the rec room. Again, that's, the closest is that we're, we're talking about plans, and these are ideas, if you don't, if you, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail, is often, is, is stated. So, just, those are a, a few introductory comments, it doesn't mean that, there's no way that all this stuff is gonna be done. And just to give you one example, the most wildly successful urban plan in the history of urban America was the Burnham Plan for Chicago, and in a hundred years, they did twenty percent of it, okay? So these are, are ideas that are put on, they're articulated, and circumstances obviously do change, so, uh, I apologize, that doesn't come from your time, I just, there seems to be some, uh, I think, misunderstanding about what capital improvement plans are, and since we really haven't had any for a very long time, it's understandable that our citizens wouldn't, uh, you know, might not totally understand what, what they're all about. Chief, hit it.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for this opportunity to present the Fire Department's Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Um, so a little background, um, this, a lot of this presentation is gonna seem very familiar, 'cause we, uh, in November of two thousand and fifteen, we gave the Facility Master Plan, which a lot of, all of these same, uh, items basically were part of that Facility Master Plan. As you, as you know, that, uh, Five Bugles was hired in two thousand and twelve to do the feasibility study and programming study, um, there were several things that were coming into play, um, with, in, uh, deferred maintenance on stations, that we needed to take a good hard look at, our current station locations and how they serve the community. That was also to lead into, um, what we just did this evening with the ordinance to pass the IGA with the airport. We wanted to make sure that the stations that, uh, were working that, the lease agreement are in the proper location to serve the community. We found that information out, uh, we also had the Faithful and Gould, was actually a city, citywide, um, assessment of the condition of facilities throughout, um, the city of Bloomington. A lot of the deferred maintenance items that were on that, we've been addressing, uh, in a short period, or in, um, out of the operational budget, um, to improve some of those, um, things that we had put off when times got rough in the late two thousands. So again, we also facilitated another plan with the Illinois Fire Chiefs, they did the assessment of, uh, deployment and staffing, it's again, this also looked at the station locations, but also what are our staffing at, at those locations and how our deployment works to, to cover the city. So as we move forward, um, we've laid out the five-year plan, again, this is, this is an aggressive plan, um, we do have, uh, as many as three different projects each, each year, um, and, and that, with two thousand and nineteen having actually two construction projects planned, um, that would be a, a large feat, but we also have a project manager figured into those construction and construction costs. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one, of course, you see, we've got the, the construction of the northeast station. Obviously, my goal before that we would even start construction is that we would make sure that we have the staffing available to staff that station, um, I would love to see the, the staffing so that we could put that, um, engine company in place at Station Three, so that we've got the manpower and the equipment ready, so when the station's built, we can move them right into that station and improve our, our response times. One of the, the projects that was highlighted in the Five Bugle Study was the Station Alerting Project. We actually have money budgeted in the current budget year to start the development of that project. Station Alerting is very complex, um, our current system is outdated, the equipment that's used is older equipment, um, we use tones, we use lighting, and of course, the voice from dispatch to alert the, the proper units to go to a call. Um, these station learning systems are, are much more high-tech, um, they actually have ramp tones and lighting, which is better for the cardiac output for the firefighters, so the health and safety, if you've been in the station when the tones go off, you can fall out of your chair if you're, if you, if you're not expecting it, right? But with that said, uh, also, the, we have, um, more improved speaker systems, so that the actual, the dispatcher is able to be understood, some of our systems, um, the speakers are outdoor, um, uh, speakers, and the sound bounces off the walls in, in turn, uh, in the station bays, making it very difficult to understand what's being said by that dispatcher. So these, uh, systems also allow for digital readout, so that you can see what the address is, what the resource is needed, um, and the biggest key to this is that you've got a dis, a, uh, display timer that's at the door for improved situational awareness for the firefighters, if they're responding out the door, they can see what time it took them for their turnout time. So this Station Learning Project basically, um, really improves that turnout time, which is one component of the overall response time, okay? Um, on, for an ambulance call, we, we expect a sixty-minute turnout time, or sixty seconds, excuse me, turnout time, and for a, a fire alarm, a minute and a half, so ninety-second turnout time. But again, this gives that improved situational awareness, as they're going to the rig, they can see what that time's getting to be. For that, for this, um, um, project, we have basically four-hundred-thousand dollar proposed in, in the, um, FY18 budget, so that we can complete that project. That'll, uh, be equipment that will be installed both in the dispatch center and all five of the stations. Land acquisition, um, we've got that in the two thousand and eighteen budget as well. Um, as you know, um, our response times, when we get up into this area, right in here, can exceed six to seven minutes. Um, the, the Station Six out on, um, Oakland Avenue gives us a good thoroughfare up Twana Barnes Road, so we can get to the, those exterior locations in that area, but it's because of the arterial roadways, uh, up in that northeast in the area that I highlighted, we're having difficulty, especially depending on the time of day and the, and the traffic reaching those times that we expect. Uh, so again, we need to make sure that we're searching at this point in time to find the ideal location for a future station, so that we can get that land secured. Uh, training and maintenance facility, um, I know many of you have seen the training facilities and some of our training props that we have out there, um, again, we need to continue to prepare for those, um, low-frequency, high, high-risk, low-frequency events. We have the, the, the training tower, we have other props that are being used, we have a need for a facility to house a lot of the equipment that's used out there. Um, one of the advantages to putting a, a facility out there, we could house a dirty classroom, um, one of the, um, in, in research is showing that the toxins that are on the turnout gear, that you should keep those out of the, the fire stations, keep them in the apparatus floor, of course, we got, um, washing policies to keep them clean, to help improve firefighter health and safety, but, again, having a dirty classroom where the firefighters can go to debrief after a training incident, uh, work on different procedures would be imperative. Also with that facility, we'd like to add administrative offices for our training officer and our maintenance coordinator, or, those two are currently housed at headquarters, where we already have an overcrowding in the administrative offices. Part of the Five Bugles plan was to either, they gave two options, was to either find an alternate location and build a different administrative office building, or expand and, and have more room for administrative offices there at headquarters. This is a much more cost-effective way that we can split up those, um, administrative positions and have them more in their functional, um, area. At two station, the training officer would be there, directly involved in the training that's going on from a day-to-day. Maintenance coordinator has, um, supplies and equipments from Station Two out of Station Five at headquarters, so this would give him a central location where we could keep all of his supplies and equipment, um, and that would be the, like, the central distribution We believe that this, this option offers a, a more effective solution, rather than trying to increase the, the footprint at the headquarters, enough to make that, all that space available for those office, those office positions. Uh, for this facility, we basically have, uh, one-point-four million dollars budgeted between the, um, or proposed, uh, between the architectural fees and also the construction costs. Again, moving on to Station Three, we've talked about this facility, this is, uh, built in seventy-three, again, it's, it's at the end of the life expectancy of the, the systems, we've had issues with HVAC, it's ineffective, um, we've tried to patch it up, keep it moving, or keep it working, um, the facility itself is not insulated, it's, uh, very difficult to keep it, uh, comfortable in real extreme cold and hot weather. Um, again, it was very imperative that we pass that ordinance this evening before we move forward, we actually have money budgeted for this current year for architectural design, but we've been waiting until we could get this ordinance approved to move forward and to spend that money on that facility. Uh, total, in total, between the, uh, architectural and the, uh, construction, we've got three-point-four million dollars proposed over the, the, both design and, and construction phase. Uh, Station Four, um, out on Morris Avenue, uh, this building was originally designed as a single-engine company station with three firefighters, we currently have an engine and a medic unit with a total of five in there, um, it's a very crowded station, there's no training room, um, again, no gender equity in, in that facility, there's one restroom, um, so, uh, as we work to try to become more diverse, uh, in, with our recruitment and retention, uh, we need to be thinking about, um, the creature features for the facility itself and making it more comfortable for everybody. For this building, uh, we basically have, uh, projected, uh, construction and, um, uh, architectural fees one-point-five million dollars for the improvements of that station. Again, uh, discussing that northeast, uh, location, again, the area that's, uh, really in particular is our, uh, this area right in here, uh, has the highest response times, again, we're trying to do a better job of tracking the data, um, for his, from historical calls, um, we have split our response districts, I've talked about that before, um, up until the beginning of this year, we only had four response districts. So, a response district, if you were looking at times for a response district, it was a, a much broader scale on those response times, we've narrowed those down, the data set, it more accurately represents a smaller area, so it'll be easier for me to show you through data that three A, three A and six A up in that upper quadrant, we have those, um, higher response times. Along with that, um, we've worked, planning on working with, uh, engineering and the Illinois Fire Chiefs to make sure that we're finding that ideal location, so that, um, we can secure that property ahead of time, make sure it's gonna be in the right place for future needs of the community. Uh, the, the last station to be renovated would be headquarters, again, several of the Faithful and Gould projects for deferred maintenance, um, such as electrical, um, HVAC, um, some brickwork on this, tuck pointing on this building, we're working through some of those projects to kind of keep this, um, uh, facility up and running, and it should be able to last until we can get the, the funds available to do this last project in twenty-one, twenty-two. Again, we have our administrative offices downstairs of this facility, um, we have cut up different areas of that to make office, um, office space, and have decreased the, the training room size, again, um, the apparatus bay size itself, um, with the equipment, when this was originally built in seventy-three, seventy-four, um, you know, equipment wasn't as large as it is today, so, um, there are some, there are needs as we continue to advance and to make sure that we're, um, adjusting for future needs of the apparatus and the, the firefighters for the, the space that's there. This project, uh, is proposed as architectural design phase in two thousand and twenty-one and construction in two thousand and twenty-two, with a total cost of, uh, just under six million dollars. So the, the figures that I presented, uh, in this, in this plan were based on the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve Five Bugles Report. Now, we have been adjusting those on an annual basis to increase a five percent to increase, for the increased cost of construction, um, also, uh, we had, uh, we have added, uh, the four percent on construction projects, so that we can have a project manager, um, as we know that we don't have the staff available to make sure that things don't get, um, lost, aren't during construction, um, I know when Station Six was constructed, they had a project manager, and it made that project work, uh, flawlessly, uh, compared to, um, we had the issues with Station Five when Station Five was built, so, um, but in total, um, we have just under seventeen million dollars proposed in this Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan over, for the, um, I guess that's the, the rest of my presentation, so.
Questions to the chief?
Mayor, if I could, just, uh, follow up, just a few last minute comments on this presentation, we appreciate Chief, uh, uh, for, uh, all he has done and he and his staff in preparing these recommendations, but I do wanna point out that as we talk about, uh, facilities in the northeast quadrant, uh, one thing we are gonna be looking at is what can we do from an innovative standpoint to try and provide possible, um, uh, improved response time sooner, uh, prior to any facilities being constructed? Uh, so certainly look for more information to come out in the near future, we appreciate at least your preliminary consideration of using part of the property tax revenue, uh, to be coming this upcoming year to help- to help us begin to address that. But we have some other thoughts and ideas we're going to continue to look at. One thing, as we look at the northeast quadrant, we will continue to coordinate and collaborate with the town of Normal as well. Both cities partnered on some of these Illinois Fire Chiefs Association studies, both for a staffing, but also for a physical facility location. So it makes sense that as we look at that northeast quadrant, both communities benefit as we look at increasing our total resources up in that area. We're both struggling with some response time issues. So that will continue, and as we continue to bring online automatic vehicle location technology, as well as other means, that'll also help us, so that it's no longer going to be, well, which side of the city limit line are you are, but where is the closest vehicle? Whether it be an ambulance or an engine company that can respond? Because many of our facilities and engine companies are going to both hospitals going across. So that's a very key area, and I think with a member of the town of Normal council here tonight, Kathleen Lorenz, I think, just wanted to kind of point that out, that that collaboration will continue with the town. Also, as even though Fire Station Number 4 talked about a renovation, we're still looking at another option, which could be, if a secondary site could be located, which would be larger and more appropriate for the size of a station, we may be looking at a total replacement. Because this particular property is very, very small. And when you look at trying to build for the future and provide the kind of the gender facilities and many others, as the chief mentioned, that's going to be another thing. I also want to just point out that I think with all these estimates for infrastructure and facilities, these are very, very preliminary estimates. So until we start getting into design work, it's, I think we just all need to keep in mind how these can change. And we're going to also be kind of learning from Normal, who is in a very aggressive mode on building a station on North Main, is it? Yeah, that'll also help us get a better idea, what's it costing today to build some of these modern facilities? So just wanted to give a few of those additional comments. So Mayor, turn it back to you and the council.
Absolutely, and then thank you, Kathleen Lorenz, for coming and joining us. And certainly, there's definitely an important series of intergovernmental agreements and a lot of critical services, especially this. Because you don't care if you need 911 service or fire, whether or not the truck says Normal or Bloomington. So I think we, as two cities but one community, we want to continue to work together. So at this point, I'll open it up for council discussion. Questions? Alderman?
Sure, thank you. Thank you. I guess, Chief, as I sit here tonight, my first thought is kind of evaluating myself, and I kind of feel like maybe I've been negligent a little bit, because I haven't really been a proponent or haven't pushed for the northeast station, given that that's my ward, I guess. But, you know, it's really not a ward issue, it's a citywide issue, health, safety. So I guess that's the reason I haven't treated it as a ward's concern. But obviously, that response time up on Borchesy is very concerning. And as I think about what's happened the last few years with Eastview Christian Church, with Normal Community, with the Grove Elementary School, I better clarify that, and all that up there, I don't know what Normal Community is. They're probably 2,100 students. The Grove is probably 400 or 500. I mean, Eastview Christian Church has grown, and we've added a lot of population up there, you know, whether you're a student or churchgoer, what have you. So I think that is really, really critical up there, and so I appreciate your work on that. The balance of that is, it's probably been two years since I've gone through some of the stations, but I can remember going through Morris Avenue, and I can remember Empire and downtown. But the conditions at that time were pretty weak. And I think a couple of your slides talked about some of these buildings at 40 years. So we must have built a couple of those stations in the early '70s about the same time.
Headquarters and 3 were both built in the 3.
We really, you know, we really need to get going on both the renovation and the growth. You know, it reminds me, every time we have these Monday meetings, every department head comes up here and they say, "I need 25 million." And the library's next, and that, you know, it adds up. And, but police and fire have to be at the top with regard to life safety. So thank you for your complete report, and I hope that you've got a lot of moving buildings here. So I hope that we can keep them on track, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lowry?
Just one real quick comment. Sometimes we look at our immediate needs or the immediate things that we want to do, and I know you're thinking this way, and maybe you're just holding off saying it, but versatility into the future. I don't know whether it would be office space for the department or whether it would be additional departments that might be combined in that same complex in that area. I don't know, but just trying to think into the future. You and I have discussed Station 4 and how limited it is. And I'm sure that when they talked about the footprint of that station back in the day, they weren't thinking about 2020. And we're still going to be using that station well beyond that, I'm sure. So just trying to think in terms of an investment, if and when we do make that investment, what's it going to look like 50 or 75 years into the future?
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Millamway?
Sure, thank you. So going back to the northeast station, and I remember David talking about, you know, collaborating with the town of Normal. Does that include, or could that include? I know there's been discussions in the past about, you know, building a station together, right? We approached that, but, and those discussions didn't pan out. And I guess I'm an eternal optimist. I, you know, I, you know, it's something that I would like to see revisited, you know, if possible. I mean, we had an example just tonight of an intergovernmental agreement, cooperation with the airport. So that's not something that I, you know, I'm willing to let go of, and I think, you know, we should, you know, still try.
And Alderman, if I could, you know, I think all those options are still on the table. As an example, even today, Normal provides firefighting and EMS services to the Towanda Township, or, let's see, is it Towanda?
Medic, yeah, medic unit.
Medic services. So, you know, whether you, there's many ways to collaborate. It doesn't have to be one where you, one builds, you know, or both build. It could be one build and you work out some sort of financial arrangement, just like we did with the airport. But it does, I think, necessitate for us to look at that, especially as we build up to and very close to our city limit. How can we in turn maximize the potential of that investment to assist the town of Normal with maybe quicker response times to their northeast and to the facilities, as Alderman Fruen mentioned? The high school, and I think an assisted care facility, and Eastview, et cetera. So I think both communities need to look at that and say, "Irregardless of the limit line, how can we collaborate, you know, for the best possible and the most quick response time for areas anywhere around any of our stations?" Because even in the downtown, where we have our facility, and now up at North Main, you're going to have Normal's. So all those, we'll be talking about how we can, irregardless of where that limit line is, how can we really, you know, make automated vehicle location pay and provide the lowest response time irregardless of where our stations are? But it's more, where are our people? Where are the vehicles? And who can get there the quickest to save lives, especially on the EMS and fire? So we'll continue those discussions.
And all those things have been, Mayor Kuzin, I've talked about this for three and a half years. I think the one thing that's not very likely is to have a singular facility that we both staff, for those, for all kinds of reasons. And it might be possible for something like us to contract with Normal, if they build a station, or for Normal to contract with us if we build a station, similar to, you know, they get some money back from servicing Towanda. So these are all things that are still certainly on the table to try to do more with less.
Well, then, maybe you can explain a little bit more. So you talked about us not being able to have a singular facility, then?
That seemed to be, that seemed to be off the table, Chief, for a variety of union reasons and other reasons.
It seems very complicated to put a building on one side or the other of the line and then split the services and put resources from Normal, resources of Bloomington. We crossed the line. We responded to Normal and assist them with their, with their structure fires as a RIT team. They do the same for us. We never turned down a call. We were always there to help them, and they do the same with us. We've got a great working relationship, but I just don't see it feasible when you have two negotiating units, you've got two government governing bodies to try to put two different forms of government in one facility and one side of the line or the other. I just really don't see that. I see a better way is that we cooperate between the two cities and work together to make sure that, for our effective response force, that we're helping each other in that aspect. And when there's no unit available, that we're providing a first response at that level.
Okay, Alderman Lowry?
I just wanted to further that comment. I think that there's things within our own city that we can do with other departments. Maybe a satellite garage for Parks and Rec, so we don't have to run a mower clear across town to get there. Just an idea. We have a northeast quadrant that is isolated, and it's not isolated just for you, it's isolated for everyone. And so, you know, there are efficiencies that we can be, we can find right within our own operation.
We already have the station, so that police officers can come in and do their reports in a safer spot than sitting out in a vehicle, trying to look down at a computer. So we're already working with other departments to try to be more efficient from that standpoint as well.
Well, thank you so much, Chief, and thanks for all you do. Appreciate it, thanks. And we move right along to the, our final item on our regular agenda, brief presentation by Gene Hamilton, the library director, and then council discussion. Once again, this is, these are all plans, they're being presented, and there is no action taken on any of these, obviously, this evening. These are all long-term.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. One clarification, I know it's hard to remember how the library fits in sometimes. Under state law, we do have a nine-member governing board that's appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. But we are a city department, and so all of our funding comes through you. So today's library, it was built in 1976. So '70s must have been prosperous in Bloomington, because all of our buildings were built then. And in 2006, it was renovated. It was a $2.9 million renovation. Part of that was a loan from the city that was repaid early. And this renovation gained about 7,000 square feet. It included flipping the building to face the parking lot and an enclosure of a portion of the lower-level open-air garage. And it's, the existing building now is about 57,000 square feet, and we have 70 parking spaces. And so Library Standards recommends using the 20-year population forecast to determine the needs for these seven areas. And so applying it to Bloomington, the Bring It On Bloomington's most recent conservative population estimate for 2035, which is a little less than 20 years, is 84,000 people. And both Farnsworth and a public library space needs planning tool calculated that for that size of population would need 98,000 square feet. So that's about 42% increase in the size that we have now. So ask why now? So for our current population, we should have about 322,000 items, and we cannot meet that. We have 318,000 items, and we are bursting at the seams. So here's some pictures, and these are not altered at all. I just walked around the building and took pictures of what's on the stacks. And so you can see there's no room at the end. And this, a collection this full can actually lead to decreased circulation, because it's harder for people to browse and find things. It's harder for people to put items back on the shelves. So it's just really discouraging for people. It also means that because people want the newly published materials, we have to discard other materials for space much sooner than standards recommend that we would normally discard. So here's some more pictures. So these are the picture book section, the children's DVDs. We actually have carts on the end of things waiting to be shelved that can't be shelved because they're so full. These are the adult Blu-rays and DVDs. And then we also have tall bookshelves. So I'm about 5'6", and that top bookshelf is right here. So anyone shorter than me really isn't able to access that bookshelf without, we do have footstools around that people can climb on. But it does make it harder, and I'm told, especially with bifocals, it's hard to look up and down. So our circulation, you can see that since the last renovation, which the open house was in fiscal year of '07, we have had an 82% increase. And then, again, since the renovation, our visitor count has gone up 4.32%. As you can see, in recent years, that has been a slight dip. And some of this is due to the spacing issues that we have. For example, one mom with young children told us that she drives around our parking lot twice, and if she can't find a spot, she leaves. So we're losing people because of these issues. Program attendance, since the renovation, again, has seen a 28% increase. And in addition to program attendance, we have a shortage of program and meeting space. So we offer our meeting space to the community. And for January, we have one Friday and two Sundays, where our community room doesn't have a reservation. And that's not even including our study rooms, which are completely overbooked as well. So in 2015, in line with direction from City Hall, the library board selected Farnsworth to explore in our, expanding in our existing location. This exploration was a five-part study deliverable that included an existing building assessment, so seeing whether our building is sound enough to stay in and add on to. A long-range vision of the future, and this included input sessions with the public, the library board, and library staff. And that took place in fall of 2015. It also included a program of building spaces, and this is a breakdown of the space needs, the actual square footage need for each aspect of the library. Conceptual site planning, which we'll get to in just a moment. And then conceptual building design, which is still in the works. From the input sessions and council strategic plan, we realized that the library could be the catalyst for improvement of the downtown area by establishing the library as a focal point for a public-oriented downtown cultural and municipal hub. The following site plans, particularly Option 2 and 3, that you'll see reflect that. And so we hope this will be an inspiration for what can be. So I'm going to invite up Jeff Martin from Farnsworth, and he's going to share his vision with the conceptual site plan.
Great. Zoom that out. Perfect. No, maybe zoom in just a little bit more, there we go.
And you do have, your sheets are folded out, so you should be able to see in front of you, too.
Good evening, I'll keep this brief, just so we can stay on time tonight. My name's Jeff Martin, I'm with Farnsworth Group. I want to walk through some scenarios we've been working with, with the library. And we'll kind of go through these one by one. I do want to mention APACE Architects is also on our team. They have been focused more on the, on the actual building addition, but I want to make sure that we recognize them and their efforts and their critical part on our team. This first option up here, you know, the city has been, there's been lots of discussions happening in the neighborhood. And it can be a really good benefit to the neighborhood. And we're going to go through what those benefits could look like. This first option right here looks at the existing library as the gray. The addition is a 20,000-square-foot stack twice, so that gets us about the 40,000-square-foot addition. That's the brown area. That currently sits in where the existing parking lot is. We would have to, there's about six to eight feet of grade change. That's what all this is representing right there, a series of stairs and ramps. But we think, you know, accessing out to the south into a large parking area, it could be a very nice landscape parking area. It could even be a parking plaza, where it could use pavers, it could be shut off, special events could be held out there. But just real quick on numbers, there's about 300 parking spaces in this lot. So again, this is a conservative approach, but just saying, hey, if we just want to put money in parking, this is probably a very cost-effective way to do that. Mayor, to your point about Daniel Burnham, make no small plans. That's really what, what I'm trying to do right here, is to say, what do we do with all the discussions that's been happening with all the properties that the city owns? And how could the library expansion maybe be the catalyst for a complete makeover of this entire neighborhood? So again, we're keeping the existing library, adding on to it, but then maybe rethinking the street network. And could that come into a large central commons right in the middle? That's approximately, I think, about 27,000, 28,000 square feet. That would be surrounded by parking. And I think there's about 100 parking spaces around that. Could we look at public works? I know there's been discussion, you know, will that be there? Could that go somewhere else? If that moves, could that become a parking structure? If not a parking structure, maybe it's a surface parking lot, but maybe there's a small building with parking tucked behind it. Maybe then we start to locate other buildings around the central commons. You know, it could be a new, a new city hall, it could be other civic buildings, it could be commercial uses, retail uses. This would take years to implement, but I think there's been a lot of talk about what happens to this whole neighborhood. This starts to give you a visual of, of, here's, here's some, some ideas of how it could change.
And the commercial enterprises would obviously pay their own way.
Pardon?
The commercial enterprises would obviously pay their own way as part of the cost.
Yeah. Yep. The final, the final one, we said, okay, what if we built a new library? And we want to keep, you know, this building right here still has good bones. What if we keep it but locate a new library down on the southern end of the site? It'd be a little bit bigger of a footprint because it would be, trying to get most of it all on one level, but there would be a, maybe a, a half of it would be a step-down level. So we're still getting around that 100,000 square feet. But again, then starting to get uses in, in and around this whole, you know, central commons. So again, I could go into more detail on these, but again, this is trying to paint a picture. There's been a lot of discussion for the neighborhood. I think there's a lot of possibilities here with keeping the existing building, maybe building new, or even rethinking the street network. So with that, I know you've got a lot to go through.
And as you pointed out, Mayor, the, it's retail spaces, that could be extra property tax revenue as well in those areas. So these are just estimated costs. So for conceptual site plan one or two, where we're keeping existing building and ren, or adding on, so the renovation of the existing building would be 7.2 million, a new addition would be 8.2, the site would be about 1.5, furniture equipment, one, and miscellaneous costs, 3.1, for a total of 21 million. There would be some hidden costs, so to speak. So there would be approximately 18 months of phase construction, which would make it a little bit difficult to enter the building. We'd have to figure out how to do that. People would be going through construction somehow during that time period. For the funding, we have about 3.2 million in secured funding already today. We think that we could do about 1.5 donations and grants and additional reserve. And then about 16.2 is what the preliminary request would be. Estimate cost for new construction, so that's site plan three, about 25.4 million in new construction, and the rest would be the same for a $31 million total. And this would be minus the value of the existing building. So whatever we decide that's worth, whether that's repurposed for city purposes or sold. And funding, again, we have the 3.2 million dollars today in hand, and we have, we think we could raise about 1.5. And so the preliminary request on this would be the 26.2, but that would be the repurpose of the, the building would be able to be subtracted from that.
But by request, this is, this is what the cost would be? It could be floating a bond to pay for this over 30 years, et cetera?
Yes. And then, so if we didn't do anything today, the minimum building maintenance that would be required, we have a roof that is needing to be replaced, our return air ducts are not sufficient, and that would also include replacing our fixed ceiling with a drop ceiling, so we would have easier access to that. We have an air handler that needs to be replaced, carpeting, broken and worn furniture, and then sidewalks at the entrance. So just a rough estimate, that's at least $2 million, and our space needs are not addressed. So I'll open up for questions.
Okay. Again, this is just preliminary. Let me ask you, this still has yet to be discussed and vetted by the library board, is that correct?
Yes. So the library board has seen some of the progress as far as Farnsworth goes, but yes, the library board would need to be involved in this.
Right. Okay. Questions? Comments? Alderman-Fruain and Hellman.
Thanks, Jeanie. My wife is a big fan of libraries. She's there every week. I'm usually the picker-upper and the dropper-offer, so.
So your life would be easier with better parking.
It would be. And I guess I would say I'm a fan of the library. I'm not a frequent user, but I think it's so important to the, to the culture of our city, our fabric. I'm glad Carol's here because that historical knowledge that she has is just tremendous. And I think, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've probably had three or four studies of library changes, improvements over the last 10 or 12 years. And I pulled one off the shelf over the weekend. It was done in December of '12 by Library Planning Associates. But we've talked about it among the council from time to time, the money we've spent, but it seems to me that the council and the library board are pretty much in sync with expansion to the south and what the potential is down here. I think in a bigger, bigger, bigger picture, you know, we need to talk about public works, which you alluded to, and how this all blends together because the public yards, the public equipment we have are so critical to this, so I'm sure we can make it happen somehow. But the reason I mention this is, as I said earlier, everybody's coming up here asking for 20, 25 million dollars. And we're going to have to decide, you know, we've been at this for 10 years. Are we going to add on? Are we going to build new? Or what are we going to do? Somewhere, the council, the mayor, are going to have to decide what priority is the library. And we can't be doing studies every three or four years and, and Farnsworth Design Studies, they're beautiful, great work, but we gotta either, we gotta put them to use if we're going to do them. And I was glad to hear you say, I think, with whatever we're doing in the city, whether it's the BCPA, the Coliseum, or whoever it is, recreational, library, or whatever, we have to make sure we're partnering the best we can with private sources. So that's great, glad to see that you've got them factored in there. But I wish you luck, you know. My time is short on here, but you're going to have a new council as of May 1, and I hope that you can get a commitment or some kind of a priority level, because we really need to get on or get off. Good luck to you.
Alderman-Hellman and Painter. We'll just keep going around the dais.
Okay. Jeanie, thanks so much. I, when I saw this come out in the packet, and I went, oh my gosh, this is, this could be kind of a game changer for the south part of our downtown. Maybe start bringing things together. The idea of a cultural municipal hub. You know, of course, I'd love to see concept three come to, to pass, but one or two, I mean, any one of these three could really spark interest, I think, in our downtown. So I appreciate the fact that you and the library board have thought about, let's not just raise the roof and do what we've done, but let's make the library happen in place. So thanks.
And the spillover benefits that have been alluded to before, if you take the current location, which is underutilized, put it charitably, south of the library, right? And it becomes a destination, then there'll be property value increases around and encourage people to fix up their properties in the immediate neighborhood. So there definitely spillovers there, and obviously for downtown. Alderman, Painter, Burgess, and Milowamway.
Thank you, Jeanie, for this very thorough report. And I think they, they all look great, but I'm just wondering, where is the secured funding coming from?
It's our reserves in the library.
Okay. Does the foundation kick in any for this?
The foundation would, and we were kind of thinking that as far as the donation total, that's unsecured because we haven't requested a specific dollar amount from them so far.
Okay. How much money does the foundation have?
I don't have that offhand, but I can get that to you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Alderman-Burgis and Milowamway.
Yeah, I noticed as we're looking at this, we're considering a very, very significant potential investment in the library. And I think that there's broad support in the community for that kind of investment, to make sure that we are accommodating those needs for the long term. And I assume that we're talking long term, that this would be an investment that would last us maybe 50-plus years if we do it right. And if we choose to move forward. As has been noticed, noted, funds are limited and we may not be able to do everything we want to do. In fact, we most certainly will not be able to do everything we would like to do. But, but with that in line, I, I'm, I question whether or not during this conceptual phase, we want to be even a little bit more open-minded to the possibilities. And I think for very logical reasons, we're focused on this particular area because it's where the library is. And it has a ton of potential. That's very, very clear, that the development of this area could be very beneficial for that area and the surrounding communities. However, there's also a possibility of economies of scale that we might miss out on if we don't consider other possibilities in our downtown area. The fact that we're, we need additional parking in other areas of our downtown, and we also need parking with the library. Is there an economy there where we could choose a different location, where we could make a parking garage part of it? There's been talk, Alderman Black brings this up, so I'll go ahead and do it since he's not here this evening, but a desire to explore the possibility of a combined city hall and library facility. And really beginning to address some of those other needs we have altogether. And so I think it's, it's difficult, since we haven't made any decisions how we're moving forward in any particular area, but while we're in the planning stage and before we commit to any certain path, I hope that we open it up to look at all possible outcomes. I think that there could be a lot of benefit to potentially looking at other locations closer to the BCPA, the Creativity Center, the McLean County Arts Center, so that the library is not an isolated destination, which is what it is right now. I mean, that's a comment I hear from people frequently, is I go to the library, but I don't go out to eat because downtown's too far away, or I don't also plan other trips. So perhaps there are other opportunities there, and I would hate to miss out on those and to, you know, 20 years from now, look back and say, oh, man, I wish we had thought of that, or at least explored it before we move forward. But otherwise, I mean, you know, if we chose to do that, there would be downsides, too, in that we wouldn't be necessarily redoing this area. But yeah, I just wanted to put it out there that I hope that there is some willingness to look outside the box here. Thank you.
The, the library staff and library board are definitely willing to entertain any direction from the council. I would caution you that if we're looking at any existing buildings, libraries do require greater capacity in the load-bearing floors. So you would be talking about extensive renovations probably for any existing building.
Okay. Old Millamway.
Well, thank you. So I also took a look at the plans, and I, and I think generally, I mean, these conceptual plans, you know, can be very exciting and inspiring. But I also, you know, I've heard from a number of people who express skepticism, and we've heard that tonight, about some of the numbers, you know, in terms of the number of visitors going down, the, the, the number of items that are rented also going down. And I, I, I do remember as well, in terms of the demographics, you know, for a number of reasons, you know, we have, for a number of the plans that we've had, you know, even the comprehensive plan, I remember we adjusted, you know, our demographics going into the future, because I think we had a much more optimistic view 10 years ago of what our population growth was going to be like. And, you know, now we've, we've adjusted that down a little bit. So I, I just wanted to, at least to voice some of those concerns, you know, from, from But at, at the same time, also want to reiterate the fact that, you know, having a vision can help to inspire people to, to be more supportive of the library. And in that regard, one of the things that I wanted to ask was, for, for one, could we do things in, in phases? And I know it's mentioned in here, but I, I don't know that it's, it's mentioned in a way that it would make it feasible in an easier way. And, and I also was wondering about the fundraising. How did you come up with the figure of 1.5 million? And, you know, if we have a, a vision that, you know, would be more inspiring to people, could we ramp up some of that fundraising? Because I think there are some people who, you know, would be supportive of the idea if more people, and so we, we use the vision to drive a little bit more of the fundraising.
Absolutely. So the phasing, I think that it would be, if you're adding on to the building, we're talking about the, the way we need space, it would be difficult to add on and not renovate if that's what you're asking there. But there would be, the phasing would be in such a way that the project would be all continuous, but there would be different components of it. I don't know if that answers your question there.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about, and, and I know the buildings are different, for example, I look at ISU, you know, the, it's different buildings, you know, but the Hancock, you know, building, the, the football stadium. So the, the face of the stadium, which is on Main Street, you know, was done first, you know, that's phase one, and I know eventually the other side would be done. So it's the, it's this sort of, you know, approach that I'm looking for, so that if we have secured some funding, then we can do something to help accommodate the space needs first before we go, you know, pie in the sky, if you will.
Right. I'd really have to sit down and really think about that. It's, it's difficult, the way our building faces, because the parking lot, which is where most people are coming up to the building, is where we would need to expand into. There's no room to the north of where we are. So it'd be difficult to do something like that. I'm not going to say impossible. And as far as the fundraising aspect, 1.5 million was a comfortable number for us. We looked at what we've saved over the past few years, thinking what can we save ourselves? And then looking at what other organizations in the area have been able to fundraise as well? And, and kind of looking at what the climate is for fundraising in our community.
I was going to let this one go, but now I'm going to do a little double talk, so. But Amelia, thank you for bringing up the, at least consider other options other than the existing location. And I was going to let it go, but before your time. And I was going to let it go, but before your time, and to say that we have a monumental task with facility planning is just an understatement, but when you talk about downtown, and everything we have going there and all the moving parts, I suggested several, several months ago, they would consider putting the library on the Commerce Bank block. I don't know, I don't think that got any traction, but as far as downtown development, tying it into the history museum, getting people to interact with downtown, they thought it had some merit, but I don't think it got much traction. But back to my comment about getting direction from the council, I think you need to figure out, is the council committed to that location? Or is there some discussion about other locations? Maybe it's the Commerce Bank building, maybe it's something else. But now's the time to conceptualize that. But you really need a council direction on, are you committed to our existing site?
Right.
I thought at the time of moving the library to the Commerce Bank, is maybe that facility, existing library facility tied in here with city administration and public works, and maybe this was more of a, an operational-type area. But I just throw that out there, that I think there's some merit to tying down the council to say, what is it you want?
Right.
Thank you.
Other comments? Again, thank you very much for your hard work, and we look forward to hearing, you know, future feedback and what the library board has to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. The, just a reminder, this Saturday, the Martin Luther King Luncheon and award ceremony will be held at 1:00 PM at the ISU Bone Student Center. Not sure about what the status of the tickets are, but hopefully if there is still available, we can get a greater attendance. But just a reminder of that. And also, our committee of the whole meeting will be held a week from tomorrow, because of the holiday on Monday. Tuesday, the 17th, is when we'll meet in the committee of the whole, 5:30 PM. That agenda will be coming out here in a few days. And last but not least, just want to throw out to you that we have come up with a new, unless otherwise changed by the council, a, a new name of, that we're using for what previously was referred to as the West Side Police Substation. It's now being referred to amongst staff and in lease agreements as the Jefferson Street Community House. And what we're incorporating in there is basically a community policing office. So Jefferson Street Community House is the term we're using, and will be using, as you know, on January 23rd. We have on the city council agenda for the council to reconsider, a proposed lease agreement with Mid-Central Community Action Center for a one-year lease of the so-called Jefferson Street Community House. So just a couple of quick comments, too. And that's all I have for the council for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have only two items. One is, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I don't, I saw, Brendan, if you could, if we could give our police chief a round of applause. And the other thing, very quickly, happy birthday, Amelia. And Alderman, comments? Alderman-Fruain, you get the first.
Sure. Thank you. And Cecilia, I'm glad you're still here. And I thank our friend, Bruce, you're still here. A couple of comments. Bruce, did you say how many people voted in Ward 9?
Yeah.
You did? Okay. I missed that number.
I thought I did.
Anyway, no big deal. And Cecilia, Cecilia, I say this out of very much respect, glad you're still here, but Mayor, I think we've got some guidelines as to what people can say at the podium. And I thought the guidelines were, it wasn't for political purposes or commercial purposes. I thought it was very kind of you to let Cecilia make her comments. Would have been very awkward for you to cut her off and say, you know, I don't want to hear about your run for mayor. But we, we ought to take a look at that, Jeff, or somebody, because this is campaign season, and I don't think that podium is the place for political speeches and/or commercial purposes. So I don't know if it's going to be easy for you to cut somebody off and say, no, thanks, I don't want to run, hear your, your spiel. But somebody's going to have to.
Well, we did have, and we had one candidate for city council speak this evening, but, and again, it, it is difficult to decide at what point is something overtly political. And so, thank you for bringing that up, Jim. No, I'm sorry, we, not, not, no, that's not, that's definitely not part of the rules. We'll, we'll get back to you. But, thank you.
Cecilia, thanks so much. And, and I thought maybe she, she wouldn't have done it unless she thought it was okay.
Right. No doubt about it. I think we know that.
But it's been several months, I sure don't open up a can of worms, but it's been several months, and we've had people come up here to talk about inappropriate topics, whether it's politics or commercial. So now's the time to nip it at the bud before campaign, campaign season starts.
Correct. Yep. Mr. Jurgens.
We have not put specific prohibitions trying to allow anybody to speak about whatever they might like. Some communities will, you know, comment to things that aren't going to get out of their mind. But we do have some guidelines that we, I think, previously approved. And what we, what the council did was to discourage utilizing public comment as a time to promote businesses and/or political activities. So I think the council in the past has made that kind of a statement of discouraging views.
But not absolute prohibition. Okay. All right. Alderman-Hellman.
Thanks. And I'm sorry, Tom left. But I just want to say that attending some of the planning commission meetings, I, I appreciate how the community development includes references to our comprehensive plan. And when determining whether or not to recommend, as it did with, at the December meeting, which came to our agenda tonight for the property, property referred to in, in 7E, that they cited where in the comprehensive plan this would fit in, and actually, to me, it helped, helped change my mind on how I felt about the, the project that they approved. So thanks to Tom Uscon and Katie, and the staff from community development for including that comprehensive plan and actually trying to use it for us, to our betterment. Thanks.
At this point, I don't see anyone else. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman-Milowamway. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]